All right. Okay, so I'm gonna start the meeting. I'm gonna go up to the podium and present this plaque to a couple of superstars. And then I'll turn it to Eric to introduce us to John McNaughton, who is here with us today. And then we'll get started on our items. We should move that in the morning. Okay, so I love starting off COW with presentations, and it seems like we have a lot of these lately, which I think our city should be really proud of. And so today, I am here to call up Rick DeRees and James Hurt to present them with the 2018 Organization Award from the Michigan Transportation Asset Management Council. So they are honoring the City of Grand Rapids for demonstrating outstanding achievement and collaboration in implementing the core principles of asset management. We talk a lot about asset management here at the city. It's not always exciting, but it is necessary. And for those of you who don't know, the City of Grand Rapids, we're really seen as a leader in the space. We've done a lot of work around asset management, and there are cities all throughout the state who look to us, to learn from us, as they create their own asset management plan. It's also put us in a really great position at the state level, as we look at infrastructure and asset management. And the governor has recognized us for that, as well as others throughout the state, including the Michigan Transportation Asset Management Council. So Rick and James, if you want to come up, I'll give you this plaque, and then if you want to say a few words about what this means to the City of Grand Rapids. There you go. Congratulations. You're the asset management guru. All right. You want to tell us about this?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And it's a joy to work for a community where asset management is important. We started all the way back in 2002. And with the Transformation Plan and Sustainable Streets Task Force, and now the Vital Streets Oversight Commission, it's really an honor to get this reward.
Well, I will add my thanks again. Really, we wouldn't be in this position without the great leadership inside City Hall. So thank you all. And now I'll turn it over to interim City Manager Eric Delong to introduce and welcome John to the city.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's my pleasure today to introduce our new Grand Rapids Public Library Director, John McNaughton. John, could you join me, please? So, congratulations.
Thank you.
So this is perhaps the first time for some commissioners, members of the commission or others in the community to get to meet you. And I want as many people to know you as possible, because we want to welcome you to this community and have you be very successful. So we have a strong partnership with the library, and we want to keep that going. And I know, based in our conversations, that that's gonna happen. So just a little bit about John. So he says, and he is personally committed to the idea that libraries can be a driver for social change by providing places and services to advance equity, literacy, and community. Topics that we're talking about and working on quite a bit, so we have that interest in common. John was a former director of the Romeo District Library. He was positioned before he came here. The most interesting position that, as a director, that you had was in Ishpeming, maybe, prior to this one. That was in a Carnegie Library in the UP, and talk about it, beacon of culture in that community. That's what you served as there. So I'm very happy that you're here, and I'd like you to say a few words, and welcome to be part of our community.
Thank you. It's a pleasure meeting all of you this morning. Well, I know some of you already, but yes, I know we're kind of the odd kid city departments, but I just want to say, I really want to make sure that our communication is open and that we're working together. One of the first things that the Board of Commissioners has tasked me with is to start a strategic plan. And as we're working that through and figuring out what we're going to do with our millage, I want, you know, everyone to be involved with that, and keep that communication wide open, and make sure that you're part of that process from the beginning to the end. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you. So, thank you.
Yeah, John, welcome. We're happy to have you.
Yes.
All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to our first item. This is not an action item, it's an informational item, and that is about repurposing Domtar. So I'll call up James Hurt.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. As the mayor indicated, this is an informational item for you. No actions required. I want to talk a little about Domtar. If you understand that piece of property, it's on the southern-western end of the city. Seventy-six acres was purchased in 1992 for the use of city departments, primarily when it comes to leaf collection, composting, yard waste, forestry, wood, as well as spoils for the water department. And it's kind of morphed into having a fire department training facility and some other activities that are happening out there. You've seen me come before you to talk about the volumes that we're receiving with the yard waste. I've come to you to increase contracts for removal, talk about the volumes that we have on the site. It's become very clear that in order for us to move forward and meet the DEQ requirements, we can no longer be considered a transfer station. We need to be looking at becoming a composting facility, a registered composting facility with the DEQ. So that's the first item I want to talk about. You know, the items are, as far as the volume, we've seen a 40% increase in our yard waste material coming to the site, not only from our own operations, but from the public. If you've visited our drop-off site, you know it's busy. Cars are lined up on the street. We're continuing to see an increase in material, which is good. But we need to look at another way to repurpose Domtar. If you could move to the next, or I can do it, I guess. So as we look at a shared model for our public service group, there's a couple of components that I want to bring to your attention. What can we do as far as moving from a transfer to a registered site? What is our needs? What's our opportunities to maximize, consolidate operations out at Domtar? So the first is transitioning to the registered compost facility, as I mentioned. In order to do that, it's a $600 fee to the State of Michigan in an application that we can do very quickly. It's a pretty minimal cost. In order for us to continue to do that, we would be looking at doing an RFP, to have someone come in and potentially operate that facility for us. So we're getting some of those details, but wanted you to be aware of that as we go forward. Another option of repurposing the site is to relocate the vector and loading station. You may know that that's currently at the Worf Station, or the Worf Facility now, and it was part of the plan to relocate that as part of the digester project, the biodigester. And this is an opportunity for us to relocate two operations that are really monitored by the DEQ into one spot. The city's envisioned relocating the impound lot. If you've been out to the impound lot, you understand that there's a lot of flooding issues out there, spaces contained. It's kind of been part of the master plan for the Water Resource Recovery Facility. And this impound lot could be located out to Domtar as well. The last item is cold storage. We've got facilities around the city, the North Yard, the Wall Street Pole Yard, the Two-One Market Site, where we have materials, we have trucks, we have excavators, we have fire hydrants, we have things stored outside throughout the city. And as you know, we're looking at, as part of the Two-One Project, is to look at, you know, selling off some of these properties, and this would be an excellent opportunity to have some cold storage. If you're familiar with clear-span buildings, you can put them up fairly simple, and it's really just cold storage for this equipment that we would use seasonally. So in the wintertime, if we're not using paving equipment, we would store this out at Domtar. And this would be a great opportunity. The repurposing of Domtar is vital to address several of these operational issues while creating space that meets our current and future needs of our community. Like I mentioned, this is just an informational item, so you'll be seeing things come before you over the next few months. I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner.
Thanks, James, for this presentation. So can you tell us a little bit about if these items that you have listed here, if they're taken from the current location where they are now, and if they're brought here to Domtar, then what happens to those other properties? Are we vacating those properties eventually?
The vector and loading station would make room for the biodigester, so that would just be relocated from there to the Domtar. The impound lot would free up some space. That's about, I think, about eight acres right now. And if you've been out there, it's fairly wet, it's, part of it's underwater sometimes, and they're pumping water from that, and that would allow some expansion if we needed to at the Water Resource Recovery Facility in the future. The other option, the North Yard, which is on North Monroe, across from the old water pumping station, there's a lot of repurposing happening on that site. All the items that are there would be located out to Domtar. So you have dump trucks, you have excavators, you have hydrants, you have aggregate bins, you know, we have sand and gravel and things like that would be all located into one facility. And then the composting operation would be new.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I'm eager to hear more about the composting operation, and also happy to see the equipment moved off the river. It's right across the street from Clearwater Place, and I've just recently had some interaction with them about the gravel that gets dumped on the road, and so we're sweeping that up. So it's a beautiful place for parkland eventually, I suppose, and the trail will go along that stretch, hopefully, eventually, and connect to Anne's. So that's really great. And I also just wanted to give you a shout-out for the, your graduating class at the Public Works Academy.
Thank you.
James, thank you so much for your work on that.
My pleasure.
Commissioner.
With the compost facility, potential compost facility, would that allow for potentially some revenue generation from the?
Potentially.
And James, stability of the site? For some reason, I remember talking about this site several years ago, and there being concerns about the underground and gypsum mines and stability of the site, and how much weight can go at certain parts, on certain parts of the site.
Yep. So that's one of the reasons the vector station's located where we're proposing it. There are some underground mines there, and that would be the only structure that we'd be putting on that site. The other, the clear-span buildings I talk about, really, there's no foundations on those, so they can go just about anywhere.
Okay. That makes sense. So we're not gonna lose a truck?
Yes.
And then, James, my question, can you elaborate a little bit on the tree farm and what that will consist of? And then is there an opportunity to do education with students? I know other cities do that.
Yeah, so what we did is we brought all the departments together that have some interest out there, or potential interest out there. And, you know, forestry's been a big part of it. They have woodchips there, they have some tree growth that's there, they have a lot of logs that are there. And one of the interests that they have is really to put in a tree farm. I can't speak for Joe or David, but I suspect they would be interested in some education for kids. We just want to identify it on the site. This is by no means cemented, so there could be some movement that happens there with as far as space. But, you know, we want to look at, how do we repurpose not only the yard waste we're collecting, but the brush and the woodchips and the logs that forestry's bringing to the site as well?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, we brought it up 10 years ago when Bob was here, and he was adamantly opposed to having a tree farm in the city.
It's a new day.
It's a new day. And so, and there's great examples throughout the country of municipal tree farms. And an opportunity, as I said, to partner with young people, educate them, and get them engaged in maybe being an arborist someday. So there's real opportunity. Other questions?
We just, you know, we've brought this up many years, too, the mill organite, kind of on your thinking around compost, and you probably don't have any of that thought through yet. We're in the stages of moving, but real interested in exploring those possibilities.
Yes. We have some more work to do.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions?
Before we leave the topic, although this is an informational item, we have to move forward with registering the site, with DEQ as soon as possible, so we will move forward with that step, because we gotta begin the process of complying with that site. Just want to make sure you know that.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you, James. We'll look forward to more information coming forward. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to a resolution approving Route 19 agreement with Spectrum Health and the Interurban Transit Partnership.
So moved.
All right. Welcome.
Everyone, this is Mr. Kelly, Mr. Hank Kelly. He is new in our Mobile GR Department.
Yep. Mix Kelly. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Trum, my new transportation planning supervisor at Mobile GR. I've been here just about three months. And I'm happy to present to you a proposal to improve public transportation service on the Rapid Route 19. This would be a three-year pilot in partnership with the Rapid and Spectrum Health. With the proposed route modifications, this service would reach from Bridge Street and Stocking Avenue in the west to Plymouth Avenue and Michigan Street in the east. And I'd like to note a few things about this proposal. It would increase the span of service for the route from morning and evening commute times only to an all-day service between the hours of 5:30 a.m. and 10 p.m., Monday through Friday. The proposal would increase frequency on the route from current 30-minute wait times to 10-minute peak and 15-minute off-peak. Wait times 15 minutes is a magic number in public transportation. It means you don't have to look at a schedule, so that's a pretty important feature. The ridership is expected to grow on this route from less than 100 average daily riders to close to 1,000 daily riders, which would move this route from one of the lowest-performing to highest-performing in the Rapid system. It's coordinated with pedestrian improvements along Michigan Street, pedestrian crossings, and upgrades to transit stops. And the city's portion, match portion, would be $293,737. That is equivalent of 40.1% of the overall cost. Spectrum would pay the same amount as the city and the remainder would be paid by the Rapid at 19.8%. Funds for this service are already budgeted for fiscal year 2019 under the same line item that funds the city's Dash Services and the Silver Line Operating Agreement. Funds are generated through stable parking revenue and would not come from property or income taxes. An internal feasibility study of providing this service directly, for example, how the Dash routes are operated, would make this close to a million-dollar proposition as opposed to a near $300,000 proposition. So in some ways, our department sees this as offering the city a third Dash route for a third of the cost. Some of the benefits are that the service would be fare-free to residents, employees, visitors, anyone who can catch this can use it. It extends the existing network of downtown fare-free services, as I mentioned, Dash Northwest, the fare-free Silver Line, and connects to corridor improvement districts, West Side and Michigan Street, and the region's largest employer. It makes better potential use of our parking assets. We have the Scribner Lot, Lots 7, 8, and 9. These have daily rates of only $2 to $4, and have available monthly parking permits at around $48. So it connects those across the river. And then reducing daily vehicle trips and congestion from employees along the corridor, finally implementing an important piece of the Michigan Street Corridor Plan, which was approved by this body. So this has been recommended to the City Commission by the Mobile GR Commission at its April 12 meeting. It has been approved by the Rapid Board of Directors as of May 23 at their meeting. It's also been approved by Spectrum Health. If it is approved by City Commission today, we would route it for agreement among the three parties for signatures, and service would be effective August 27. I'm happy to entertain any questions by Commissioners.
All right. And then I'll also maybe give an opportunity, we have representation here from the Rapid, and I wonder if they want to make any additional comments. Pardon? Oh, and Spectrum. Spectrum's here, too. Oh, I didn't see you back there. And so I think maybe I'll allow both Spectrum and the Rapid to say a few words, because there may be questions specifically for the Rapid or Spectrum. We did talk about this recently at our Rapid Board meeting. It's a significant investment on the part of the Rapid, but it also is moving us forward with a really incredible partnership. And so, Brian, I don't know if you want to come up? Michael? Okay.
Well, good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I would just say that we are in full support of this new project. As a taxpayer entity, we, anytime we can increase service without increasing taxes, it's a win for us, so very supportive of it.
Thanks. Commissioners, I'll add, and Michael, I don't know if you want to speak to this, I'll add that with the potential changes to Route 19, there's also changes to Route 14. One of the concerns in our city, we heard from businesses along Oak Industrial, is having access to the Rapid for employees who work along Oak Industrial. So Route 14 will be rerouted and will be providing actually better services along Oak Industrial. And Route 19 will no longer go up through Oak Industrial.
Correct. And that change has already taken place. So on May 7, we have rerouted Route 14 to go along the Oak Industrial Corridor.
Great. Thank you. All right. So questions? Commissioner Kelly, you want to weigh in? Mobile GR spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah, so we're just thrilled, too, that it's really an extension of the Dash, and that east can meet west, because we'll be going across Bridge Street, which does bring to mind the need to, and I know that we are considering what we can do along Bridge Street to make that a safer corridor. But thank you for your work, Hank, and your report. And yeah, we're real excited about this. I hope that we get a lot of use, not only from employees, but from the neighbors going back and forth downtown. It's gonna be free service.
And they'll have access to a grocery store. Commissioner Linnier, and then Commissioner O'Connor.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm curious to know, I think this actually is a really good partnership between Spectrum Health, as well as ITP, and then our city, but I am a little curious to know of how the City of Grand Rapids is in the position where they're contributing 40%, and the Rapid is contributing 20%. And I'm also interested in learning a little bit more about how did we determine this was the best route for fare-free travel? Because with the other Silver Line, we don't have fare-free travels. I'm just curious to know a little bit more about those two things.
Yeah. I, you know, might defer to some folks who are on the Rapid Board for specifically the Rapid's considerations around their contribution. But in terms of why the city found this to be advantageous, is that it is, should be a natural transit corridor based on what we would refer to latent demand, people who could be using a bus or not driving a car but are not because the service isn't there. That's part of why I mentioned that 15 minutes is a magic number. Having commute-only, 30-minute wait times is considered too inconvenient for some folks, which is why Spectrum has been running, you know, a shuttle for their employees. And so this, I feel like, you know, the conversations that I've been privy to are that we would be remiss to turn away such a partnership proposal when, if the city were to provide an extension to get folks out of their cars, it would be, you know, close to $1 million, and that was just to go to College Street. So when we look at making the, not just the Rapid or Dash, but having a robust transportation network, that this is an important piece, and certainly not the only piece. My understanding is that we are working closely with the Rapid on the Align Study, and that identifies corridors throughout the city to be strengthened, including Eastern Avenue, and we are looking to have partnerships of this kind in the future. But in terms of Michigan Street, the natural ridership base that should exist if there were better service, the cost advantage to the city of not going it alone, and then the specific conversations around the Rapid's contribution, maybe I could defer to.
Yeah, maybe Brian, or if Brian, won't you come up and speak to that? Because there is, there's state funding, I mean, Rapid funding is, I don't have all the information in front of me from the board meeting, so I'll defer to Brian.
Brian, CJ, from the Rapid. Thank you, Mayor. The way the funding part of it came out specifically is the, although it works out to 19.8% or whatever, essentially 20%, essentially, it's the commitment financially that the Rapid is putting into the Route 19 right now. It's roughly $150,000 a year that we're spending on Route 19 for peak hour-only service, and it's been a very underperforming route. And really, the question was, if there is not a partnership developed to do something different, we're basically gonna redirect the resources somewhere else. We know the Michigan Street Corridor is extremely important. And so when the city and Spectrum Health started talking about it, it's like, we can be part of this. And aside from the existing funds we're putting into it, we're also adding an additional bus into the service, which essentially, we're gonna have to expand our fleet to make that happen. And also, as doing this, we're able to leverage state operating assistance, which amounts to almost 33% of the total cost of it. So we're, the state is helping, and between the partners, that that's how we're making it all work.
And the Rapid would be taking care of the capital with the additional bus.
Exactly.
And then Eric, are you interested in weighing in at all, or talking about the fare-free portion?
Well, I think that it's a good investment in expanding Dash, and we do fare-free Silver Line downtown, so it's similar to other things that we have done. And I think it's consistent with the Michigan Corridor Study, and really, I don't know that anybody mentioned this, but there's been a group meeting about mobility on Michigan for, on Michigan Street for some time, and this is a product of that work group that involves all the partners that were part of the Michigan Corridor Study. So I think it's a good investment. And it's, we're getting, we're expanding Dash service at the fraction of a cost it would take us to do it if we wanted to do it on our own.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, this is really exciting to think about this as like a West Side Dash as well. I think I have the map up for Route 19. I think my only question would be about the potential of having a couple more stops, especially as you look at, you know, talk about the parking, which everyone likes to talk about parking. I mean, this bus goes by a city-owned parking lot on Muskegon and Leonard Street that is vacant almost 24 hours a day. And so if you really want to talk about moving people from one place to another and alleviating some of the parking concern, you know, I really think having a stop on Leonard Street somewhere where it goes down Leonard that could access that parking lot would make absolute sense. And then, you know, I love that it brings connection between some of our business districts, you know, it touches on the Bridge Street Business District, but, you know, again, there's no stop on Leonard to one of our busiest business districts, as well as our Stocking Avenue. There's nothing, you know, go Stocking and Alpine, and we have a nice little hub of activity on the corner of Fourth and Stocking, where there's no stop anywhere near there either. So if we really want to make this work for all of our business districts in our neighborhoods, I think it's important, especially if the bus is going by, adding a couple stops doesn't seem like it would be very difficult to do.
I'd like to address that, actually. The purpose of what we're doing right now is so that we can get the service in place. Essentially, we can only get one bus into this operation, and to make the service work on 10- and 15-minute operation, it's requiring a total of three buses. To make it go further, to do more stops, is gonna require another bus that we simply are not able to procure at this time. But obviously, we believe the success of this route will generate further things in the future. This basically gets us the Michigan Street Corridor, which I think is probably the number one priority.
I guess my next one, why does the bus drive all the way to Leonard Street, then? If it's, I mean, you're driving an extra mile and a half out of your way in a bus in the city, that probably takes 15 minutes.
Actually, the existing Route 19 is gonna be, it's not gonna go up to Leonard. It will be, essentially, it'll run from Plymouth down Michigan, and it will curl up on, basically up on Second Street. So it's gonna fall short of coming to Leonard. The Route 7 serves Leonard currently.
And I know Josh isn't here today, but my understanding, and maybe I'll look to Commissioner Kelly, is that there's also work being done right now around the Dash routes, and that there are gonna be some recommended changes coming forward. I don't know what those are at this point, because I know that that's being studied right now.
And add much more to that, other than we are, it's all part of this, looking at the bus stops, the quality of them, the accessibility of them. So there's a whole lot of transition going on right now around Dash, and then the Align Study as well. So this is a step in the right direction.
Commissioner Allen?
I don't oppose this at all. I think this is a smart move. Several times in the comments, I've heard people say this is a first step, this is one of the first routes we've looked at. What I'm hearing through my lens, or through my filter, is that this is a way to help resolve some of the issues that we have on Michigan with the large, huge employment center of Spectrum and the number of folks coming in and out of there. Certainly, this goes by some lots, as Commissioner O'Connor mentioned, that are underused. And I also know that the Rapid is preparing to look at, do a route study. I'd like to encourage you to include in that route study, not only looking at how better routes reduce fares or free fares, will not only help alleviate the parking issue, but also help alleviate the issues that people of lower income who use, that's their only means of transportation, to get to their job downtown. Folks who work in Janitorial at Spectrum, or working at Banandel Arena, or working at the restaurants downtown, you know, they come from farther out. It's not a parking issue, it's a, we keep talking about equity, but it's an equity issue. So I hope that that's a part of the study of how that could be used. Maybe we could get, maybe the city could get creative and offer, if you're below a certain income level and you're employed downtown, we can offer free fares through a certain way, through a pass or something like that. There's, we have people moving all over the place because of our housing issue, and I think better utilization of the Rapid can help both, not the parking issue, but also the equity issue of getting people to their place of employment on time and at a lower cost.
And we are actively talking about that at the Rapid right now, Commissioner. And one thing we talked about, and anyone from Spectrum is more than welcome to come up and speak as well, but what we talked about at the Rapid Board is, you know, this is also a great model of a private-public partnership. is also a great model of a private-public partnership. I mean, the fact that we have our largest employer at the table, working with us around transit, and this could be a model for other employers throughout the city to come to the table and be a part of finding some solutions to transit. So I'll maybe allow Spectrum to jump in here. I know you've been at the table with us for about six months, eight months, working on this.
Yes.
And looking at options, so.
Hi, my name is Matt Ringman. I'm the Director of Security for Spectrum Health. Like the mayor said, I've been working on this for about eight months. And I'll just say that my previous, I'm retired law enforcement, so my previous employer was, or my previous experience was in the public sector. I just think this is such a unique opportunity for Grand Rapids, this partnership between private and public, especially as it relates to public transportation. And I think the true opportunity here is like, the gentleman here from the mobility group mentioned is that you're taking a line right now that has 100 people a day riding it, and you're increasing it to 1,000. So I can just tell you from Spectrum's perspective, many of those people have no experience riding public transportation. So this is a true opportunity to show people who would never otherwise touch public transportation, to show them the efficiency and the convenience of it, and then have them tell all of their families and their friends, and build acceptance of public transportation. The other big benefit to this, like was also mentioned, is reducing congestion on the Michigan Corridor. It really is gonna promote a lot of efficiency. We have so many staff that get in their car down at Bridgewater and drive up, just drive up the hill to Butterworth for a meeting, and then ride back down. It's gonna greatly increase efficiency on the corridor, and we think that's gonna be a huge benefit. That's one of the reasons that we're so passionate about this. And it also relieves a lot of stress on our parking infrastructure that we're doing a lot of work and investment in right now.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I'm still hung up on this map here, guys.
Because he wants something on Leonard.
No, but I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the existing route goes by Spectrum's facilities on Seventh and Seward. So I imagine that's a pretty big motivation for Spectrum to be able to connect their Seventh and Seward facility to their Michigan Street facility. And so if the gentleman from the Rapid says that it's no longer gonna go up Seward, it's gonna cross on Second, that eliminates two of your properties from a route, a bus stopping in front of the route, so it's just not adding up here. And again, I don't know, it's just frustrating.
Yeah, is Conrad still here? I don't know if Conrad's can speak to, no.
I mean, then let's up the city portion and actually do it right. I just, I don't, well, the Rapid's portion and do it right. I just, it seems that we're just running.
Brian or Mike, do you wanna, do you wanna speak to that?
I simply go back to the same indication that while the existing route runs up Leonard and comes back down Seward and would be ideally suited to it, the biggest portion of ridership is in the Michigan Street corridor. And the only way to make the time that Hank talked about happen was to use three buses and basically shorten the loops at each end. And we already took care of the one end by rerouting the Route 14 through Oak Industrial and provide better service there. The other end, we had to basically cut it off after it comes on Bridge Street and comes around to Second Street. So yes, it does, I think the Spectrum facility is up on Fifth or Sixth and Seward, but yes, it's gonna, it's gonna cut short of that. However, Spectrum, this is something that they were aware of in the conversation, and we're fully in agreement with.
Yeah. It's, as we said, and we talked about this at the Rapid Board meeting, this is a start. We're gonna learn from it, and if we have to tweak it and make changes, we'll have that opportunity. But we have to start somewhere, and this will be able to meet the needs of, as you said, the 10 to 15-minute stops, which we know is critical for ridership. So, Commissioner?
I still have the question about fare-free and how the decision was made to make these fare-free. And Eric, I think, I think it'll probably be best coming from you at this point to help me to understand how this is fare-free, Silver Line is not. And you've mentioned that there are portions of Silver Line that are downtown, some of the stops downtown are free. But if we're talking about doing the exact same thing on Division, which is bringing, to your point, Commissioner, East meets West, we were bringing North and allowing it to meet South, then the opportunity should be equitable. So I'm just trying to fully understand. I don't have any opposition as much as I'm just not, it's not, I'm not comprehending.
I don't think the discussion has progressed that far yet. So, you know, the idea of perhaps finding a way to do the passes might be interesting. I think there is more discussion to be had. So this is an area where work has been happening and where we have a partner, and I think as time moves on, we'll be able to look at other investments as well. The, and the, I wanna be clear about where the, where the Silver Line is fare-free. So it's basically from wealthy north, so as you get in the downtown corridor area, that's where currently it's free. So, and it's, and that was a hope to make circulation in downtown more viable, to help with parking and other concerns that we have within the downtown area, employment area. So I think the, you have a good point. I think the discussion needs to progress, but this is where we are today and what we can do.
So Eric, what I'm hearing is you'll follow up with Josh and the Mobility Department to look at the other portion of the Silver Line that falls within the city. I think it's a great opportunity, too, to talk to our partners in Wyoming and Kentwood as well. And whether it's completely fare-free or, like Commissioner Allen said, some type of income eligibility, I think there's a real opportunity there. But I think Eric's right, we haven't had those conversations, but I think we're right to do that, and.
And I think it's also consistent with work that's happening on the Corridor Study and also with the South Town Sit Study. Because as part of the, part of beefing up the Silver Line and making it more viable is having better connections east and west to the Silver Line. And I think that's part of the Align Study and something that we'll come forward to. So as we work on that, I think there'll be more opportunities to do a, to achieve what you're interested in.
Yeah, it would be interesting, too, just to see. I was thinking about this the other day as I was driving in a bus lane because it didn't have the paint on the ground. It would be interesting to see.
In admission.
I was about to turn right.
Or you would've.
At some point, right.
Right for miles.
I opened up that can of worms, I'm sorry. What I was thinking about, it would be great to have an update on the Silver Line, where we are. And Mayor, I know, you know, with your seat at ITP's Board, you're proudly aware of how it's doing, but it would be great to kinda get an update on that, too, as we continue this discussion.
Well, and Commissioners, I should add, it's not necessarily specific to this, but it's germane to the conversation. You all know that we've been in the process of hiring a new CEO at the Rapid. So some of this is just this period of transition that we're in, as Peter gets ready to retire. You can mark your calendars. We'll have interviews, first-round interviews for, with four candidates for the CEO Rapid position next week, Wednesday, Wednesday evening at 6 o'clock at the Rapid Central Station. I think it's actually gonna be in the Ellsworth Room. Of course, all of you are welcome to attend. I'm on the search committee, so I'll be around that table. But I, that's a conversation that the search committee and board members have been having about expectations for the next CEO. And so I think, you know, it's not an excuse that some of these conversations haven't happened, I just think it's just timing-wise, quite frankly.
Thanks.
So other questions about this? I think the other compelling thing for me, Commissioner Lanier, is the difference in the cost of extending Dash to meet the needs versus this opportunity to partner with Spectrum and ITP, which will lower our costs. And then we can use the dollars to really think more creatively with Dash and how to better serve other parts of the city. And so I think if you just look at the cost-benefit, there really is a cost-benefit to do this. And as I said, in partnership with, you know, our largest employer in the city. And I'm hopeful that we'll start to see other employers come together and look at this as a solution. Because we do have clusters of employers that if they pool together, we could do some creative things. And Walker's doing this right now with the Wheels to Work. So that's been a pilot project that Walker has been doing. And so I think, again, these are examples that we can learn from and then potentially have throughout the city and other districts.
Yeah, and Mayor, I would add, as our corridor improvement districts grow and begin to have more tax capture, similar to, for example, the Monroe North Tiff, they made a contribution to bring the Dash out a little further. And there's a lot of desire in the part of all these corridors. So there could also come a time when those could be extended there and work with public-private partnerships, which many cities have done in terms of investment, because those businesses realize that it's an economic development tool for them to be able to get, provide some transportation and a benefit for their employees in terms of trade-offs versus driving into the city with a car.
All right, any other questions or comments? Matt, thank you for being here, appreciate it, and your team from Spectrum?
Yes.
Thanks for your work on this. And then Brian and Mike, thank you. Thank you for this call. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution authorizing the publication of a 45-day notice of intent to issue bonds for street lighting, duct bank, and primary circuit system capital improvements. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Jana?
This is a request for authorization to publish a notice of intent in a paper or a paper of local circulation, that would be the Grand Rapids Press in our case. As I say in my cover memo, publishing this notice does not require you to issue bonds. It merely permits you to do so. But the primary purpose of this publication is to give the public a chance to input in terms of how they feel about issuing bonds, whether it's for this project or for any other project. So publication, if you approve this today, would be published in Thursday's paper, so June 7th, and then, June 6th, no, it is June 7th, sorry, June 7th. And then the public has 45 days to contact the city clerk's office to let them know whether or not they think this bonding is a good idea.
So this is, this is just the notice of intent? So we're not moving forward?
Right.
It's the notice of intent?
Include as an attachment in your agenda items, the actual notice that will be published in the paper. Since these are capital improvement bonds, the notice has to be a quarter-sized page ad or notice, so that it's very visible to the public when they're going through the paper.
Okay. So Commissioners, questions? I feel like we've talked about this quite a bit, and Commissioner Lanier?
Yeah, I'll just be consistent. I did not vote in favor of bringing this forward. I think that, well, a few things. The first one is, we, I think it was three years ago.
Yeah, it's like, it was like five years ago.
Was it?
Mayor Hartwell was still here.
Five years?
I think it was four and a half, maybe.
So when we, when we looked at the street lighting and the LED lights, the cost of that at that time was about $10 million. And, and so now it's $20 million. And we really haven't had a lot of conversation between then and now to kind of talk about why the cost has increased so significantly. We know that if we were to do this, we will still, we're not changing the poles, and I think that's a significant cost. So we're, even with this increasing in cost so significantly, we're still unable to completely do the job that's needed. So I'm concerned about that. And then I know, after we talked about this before, there was an article in the paper where there was information about consumers going up on their rates, and we're not sure how much they're gonna go up on their rates. And because of that, I'm concerned that if they go up on their rates, that we won't save anything. And I just think we probably need to spend some time before issuing the bonds so that we can fully understand what it is we're trying to invest in. I am not in opposition of street lighting, but I just think the timing of this isn't, this isn't the time for it. And then I've also, like I did last time, I'm just, when I think about this level of an investment, I think about things like lead and how the community is suffering. And if I were to have an option about what we could do community-wide for the citizens, I would probably look more at lead because of how old the homes are in this city, more than the streetlights, because there are so many uncertainties. Knowing that 20 million wouldn't even put a dent into lead. But just understanding that if we were going to contribute something from the city, that that would probably be something I would prioritize. So I'm just kind of reiterating a lot of what I've said in previous conversations, but just wanted to make sure that was clear today.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah, and thanks. And I think I'll have, Mike, Commissioner?
Just real quick, in fiscal this morning, we found that there's gonna be, they're projecting a 60% increase in street lighting.
With?
For consumers.
In, for LED, we should explain that. We are, we are fighting that, by the way.
It was in fiscal this morning, so.
Yeah, because it is extremely concerning, and there's other cities who are fighting that as well, that rate increase.
We're gonna have a source, we're doing an intervention, and I found out this morning consumers is not going to object to that, so perhaps we'll get at the table and have some discussion.
Yeah, yeah. It, I believe there still is a cost-saving, even if the rate hike does go through. But I think, I'd like Mike to come forward, because I feel like there's a lot of work that's been done since the last time this was brought forward, and a complete analysis of how, how poor the infrastructure is with the primary circuit. But then my understanding is, the reason it's 20 million is because it does involve conduit, primary circuit replacement, duct work, poles, the grounding that the poles go in, as well as the fixtures, that it would be then. But can you speak to that, some of the Commissioners's concerns?
Sure. So the LED portion over the years, because LEDs become less, has gone from 10 million to 8 million. So that's the portion that's LED. And we're trying to do it for less, we're trying to figure out how to do it for less. So that's the street light replacement. And consumers does have a rate case where they're trying to raise un-metered lights, that'd be in the annexed area, about 4,000 of them, about 15%, 16%, just raise the cost per fixture. And then the other lights that we don't have would be 61%. But the ones on the primary circuit, they'll be, I think it's a 3.4% increase or something. They're proposing for our primary circuit right now. So there is some increases, there will be some savings from the LED. It won't be as big as we hoped, obviously. But the other 12 million, we're gonna invest in our other infrastructure, our primary circuits, where we provide service to about 100 buildings, plus the duct work system that we currently rent out to users like Verizon, AT&amp;T, and all these other users that we were.
Comcast.
Comcast, rent them out to. And we're gonna pull some old wires out of there, nobody uses copper anymore, and make more space in them duct paint, so we can get more revenue from them, so. So all these things are going on, but the street, the street lights are 8 million of that 20 million, and that's the difference now.
And it includes pole replacement, too, correct?
Bad poles.
Bad poles.
We're not, we're not gonna respace all the telephone poles, but we're doing a survey right now to determine what poles need to be replaced. Many of you know there's a few bad poles out in the system.
A few.
So the concrete poles are definitely 100% replacement, and I talked before, our plan is to do them with wood unless there's a group or a business district that wants a special assessment, so that they can have the ornamental poles. You know, we'd like to standardize on the lights, standardize on the poles, reduce the overall cost of the operation, so.
Commissioner?
I mean, I've been asking for a while now, like, there seems to be a private market solution to this that can mitigate some of the risk, especially given the unknown rate environment in which we're operating in, where their potential investment, they essentially get paid back by our cost savings. And if they're willing to assume the risk, why should we assume the risk? I've still, I just, I can't, I can't wrap my head around this, and I've been asking for that for six months, and I haven't heard anything, but we looked into it, but we're not gonna do it. I just, I'm, it's just a way I could vote for this.
And ESCO would protect themselves in the contract, and it would be energy savings, not dollar savings, right?
I understand that. The underdues savings is a payback or a lease-and-buyback type of arrangement, which is not legal in the state of Michigan, and I don't think we fully investigated that opportunity.
I think Jeff can add some content to this discussion.
And Jeff, maybe you can also speak to, with bonding, the limitations that, but also the logic behind that and the payback, where the revenue will come to pay back the bonds.
Sure. So we looked at TELP as one of the features we looked at and some other options. We talked to Marquette, they did about a $28 million issue through Johnson Controls. We looked at the financing rate that they were able to achieve, and we talked to our bonding underwriters quite a bit about what would be the best process. So in the, in the case of a TELP, you still have the payments. So typically, they'll guarantee them, in Marquette's case, it was for five years, so they take some of the electrical savings and pay the bonds. So, but it's not a guaranteed term throughout the life of the, of the contract, it was a five-year term there. So we've checked that out, and we're not completely opposed to TELP financing for the LED portion, which would be the 8 million piece. We can still do that for that piece, but I don't believe we can do it for the infrastructure piece. So there's a couple issues going on here. We feel it's cheaper with our credit rating that we can issue the entire bond series on our own at a cheaper interest rate than we could through the TELP financing and not include a contractor, because the contractor adds costs. So there's several moving pieces, and we can do a separate meeting on this if So, there, there's several moving pieces, and we can do a separate meeting on this if you'd like to, to go fully over all the things that we've looked at for this piece.
But with, but with a separate contractor, that means that the city is gonna do the work in-house, and we don't have enough guys to put poles and lights up, anyway.
We're not gonna put these lights up in-house, we're gonna buy the lights and we're gonna pay a contractor to put them up.
Well, I guess my second, though, is, I mean, even, I guess there's a cost benefit to be weighed between the, the cost of financing and then what that available debt load can do, and what else we could use, to, to my colleague's point of what can you use? If we had eight million dollars of additional bond capacity that didn't go to streetlights, even at a higher cost of financing, what could you do with that other eight million dollars that could have benefit if we're looking to take on twenty million dollars in bond liability?
So unfortunately, although it doesn't count towards our official debt rating, for the state, our underwriters, when they do our rating, include this stat as part of that rating, so it is and it isn't. So we still have to look at that piece when we issue those bonds, if we did TELP or traditional financing.
Jeff, I think, excuse me, Jana.
Regardless of whether it's city debt or if it's a lease, it's going to count against our rating, the city's legal debt margin is really large right now, it's almost four hundred million dollars, so we've got a lot of space.
And what is our, what, what do we have outstanding?
Uh, about four hundred million, but most of that's water and sewer, not, not general.
So, so what is our general debt ceiling? We don't have a revenue bond ceiling.
Our legal, legal debt margin, which is based on ten percent of the city's SEV, is around five hundred million dollars, and we subtract out the exempt debt, like drains, electric, or water and sewer, and the little DDA bonds that are left, and we've got about a hundred and forty-four.
And Jeff, can you speak to payback, because part, and, and again, I'm going back to memory from one of the other times that we talked about this, that the savings from the energy savings, as well as the potential revenue for leasing out some of the duct space, that will assist in paying back the bonds?
It, it could, although they're in different funds right now, so we pay all of our electrical costs out of the general fund through the, um, street lighting department, and these would be capital improvement bonds. So, to, what we'd have to do is transfer some of those savings that we'd seen in electric from the general fund into the capital improvement fund, if you wanted to approach it that way. So, there's, again, there's a lot of moving parts on how this gets paid for and the best way to finance. And, and again, this is just a notice, it doesn't title us to do anything, if, before we'd actually issue bonds, we'd have to come back to you and get full approval, and we can work on all these details at that time. This gets us the forty-five days started, because there's a lot of infrastructure that's really dangerous right now, and poles that are falling down. So, we wanted to get this ahead of the curve, so we, we could hit the ground running early in the summer, so that's why we're bringing this now.
Okay, I'll go Commissioner's part, and then Kelly, and then back to Liner.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we just got an award for asset management, so I wanna be careful to not disrupt that too terribly much, but I do think, um, a disruption.
Different asset.
A different asset.
That's our streets asset.
But still, it's still an asset management conversation. And I do think a disruption, you know, is worthwhile for the sake of our budget priorities, so when we prioritize the budget, it was communication, it was affordable housing, it was community police, it was community engagement, it's third world investment, it was lead. And if we have a chance to save eight million dollars to redirect toward that, to me, that's a, that's worthy for additional conversation. So, I think that, you know, twenty, I'm new to this whole scene, twenty million dollars is a huge number to me, and I don't wanna disrupt the asset management progress that we're making too terribly much. But I do think, in the same way that we're gonna talk about it for the third word later, it's worthy to make sure that this type, this magnitude of a money decision, we can have an equity conversation attached to it, so.
So, to be, to be clear, we're not saving eight hundred, eight million dollars, if we did TELP financing or some other form of financing, that's, they're still a loan, it's still an outstanding payment. Typically, those are, again, guaranteed with the energy savings, so the energy savings would pay the bonds. But from what I've seen on those, they're not guaranteed the entire term, and there's significant markup from some of these contracts to get these into place, so.
Sure.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just, you know, this conversation was happening over ten years ago, about the streetlights failing, and, and in my tenure of eight years, I've had so many complaints, not just about poles, quite recently, a lot about poles, but also circuits failing. And I just know that, that kind of infrastructure, which is not, you know, exciting, just like roads weren't exciting, it was the potholes probably that convinced everybody that we finally had to do something. But I really think we need to take a very serious look at this, and if it means another session to really delve into this, I'm fine with that, but, but I'm, I'm feeling like if we just at least get this process started, then we can still have, and within that forty-five days, we could have another conversation, as busy as we are. I just, I'm very concerned about postponing this much longer, just given the complaints that we're hearing, and, and when we have had circuits go down, it, for a period of time, we've also had larcenies go up. So, yeah, and I, I, maybe we need more information about that too, but I'm very concerned about postponing this much longer.
Yeah, and we know lighting is key to, to public safety. What I'm hearing is that there are, there are some significant questions, and it is, it is a significant amount of money. But also, what's appropriate for bonding and, and what's not. And, so, I, I think we should plan maybe an, an hour or ninety-minute session specifically about this issue, because I, I feel like there have been questions about, about this every time, and I think all of us need to be very clear, and we need to have ample time to have those questions answered. And I think we should probably do that soon.
Well, yeah, and I don't want to undermine the, the concerns that we're hearing around this table.
Right.
At all, around equity, it's just, we need to do this as well, so.
Yeah.
There are other, other areas we might have to look at, but...
Yeah, to me, to me, it's, it's not, it's not about one being more important than the other, they're all important. It's about figuring out how we're going to, to address all of the different needs in the city, and this is an infrastructure piece that we own, we own these streetlights, and we haven't invested in them in a very long time.
Yeah, in this budget, we tried to take care of the two asset classes that we've kind of liked over the years, one was street maintenance, one was street lighting. So these are the final kind of two asset management classes we haven't really dealt with on an ongoing, sustainable basis, so that's what we tried to, to include in this fiscal plan.
Yeah, yeah, so Commissioner Liner?
So, two other things, Mike, can you give us an estimate of what's the percentage of the poles that would be replaced? If you have that, and then, the other thing is, it's my understanding, I think this came up the last time we were talking about this a few weeks ago, that the poles or the lights would have surveillance capabilities? And so I'm wondering, how does that fit in with the policy era that we have about going to the public before we invest in any infrastructure that potentially could invade privacy, if you will?
Sure, so, Mike, if you wanna talk first about, if you know the percentage of poles?
I don't know the percentage of poles, but I know there's seven hundred and twenty concrete poles we're gonna replace, and we're doing a survey now of the poles that are bad, and I don't know what that number's gonna look like. I suspect it's gonna be a fairly good number.
And how many poles do we have?
Someplace in the area of eighteen thousand poles, so. I would guess that we're gonna replace a few thousand of them, so.
Okay, then, Commissioner, in regard to the surveillance policy? So, the, it's actually a policy about the use of new technology, and so not necessarily surveillance. And what we're proposing to install are seven-pin connectors that would be used for, in our, in our vision, things that would, automatic meter reading, and would provide communications with our, with all the water system stuff, and could have other uses as well. So, it's a, it's a, it's a, as, while we're doing this, we need to, we need to put this infrastructure in now, if we wanna be a smart and connected city, and we need to get the infrastructure everywhere. So, in order to comply with the policy, I'm required to disclose that we're doing this, which I've done in the budget, and so it's in, there's a, a statement about technology in the fiscal plan, and it's also, and that's where we disclosed it. So there would be more discussion as we move forward, but it is disclosed in the fiscal plan that we're moving forward with this.
So then I have a, a different understanding of how that policy works, because it's my understanding that it isn't just us disclosing through our meetings that occur at nine thirty a.m. on every other Tuesday or a couple Tuesdays a month. But it's really going into the community, helping the community to understand what the technology is. And it is technology that's tied to surveillance, because it isn't all technology. You know, we didn't go to the community about the website to say, hey, we're thinking, we're considering this, can you provide feedback? We did include the community to weigh in on what we created. But it's specific technology that could lead to surveillance, because that's, you know, the moment when a citizen may have concern about, you know, being captured and being unaware of that, and so...
So, we disclosed what we intend to do with it, and we talked about it, I think, during budget review as well. So, if there's more, so we've taken the first step to disclose it and have it printed in the budget document as we're required to do. And the process you're recalling are processes where something has come up mid-year, like the aerial device that the fire department purchased. So that was kind of a mid-year idea, that wasn't actually part of the budget, and we went through a process for that. The APL for parking system was part of that too, and if we'd like to go through that kind of process when we're ready to deploy the actual devices that we're going to use, I think we can do that too.
But see, I think, having those discussions after you've purchased it is too late. The way the policy was designed and how we were, you know, we had some preliminary meetings as we were developing that policy in conjunction with ACLU, and the purpose of it was to make sure that the city was not making a purchase that the community was unaware of.
Commissioner, if I may, if I may add, the investment, the way it's designed is, the seven-pin connector, think of the framework that we're allowed for technology to be plugged into that. Any new technology that we plug into that device, we'll go through that policy.
Okay.
So this investment is not, we're not saying, any, any technology that's plugged into that device, we're now, by approving this, you have approved all of that.
Okay.
It will go through that policy.
Okay.
Okay, that's our intent.
Okay, that helps me to understand, but I think the other element, when it's time to go through the policy, it isn't just us, you know, having a friendly discussion here at this table, it really is to have some public discussion. Especially the magnitude of lighting, which is all, you know, seven, eighteen thousand lights across the city, and if we're gonna have a discussion about having surveillance through those lights, we need to make sure that the community is fully aware of that.
It is our intent, we won't move forward with, in applying any new technology on the seven-pin, to have any ability of doing something new. The policy was intended to do that, to allow the community to have a voice if we're deploying a new technology, that will go through the policy, just so you know. As it relates to the rest of the conversation, just know that, as a body, you can determine whether you wanna make that investment, and, you know, think of the LED lights as an investment that it makes sense to do if you're gonna replace all of the infrastructure that is currently, it's beyond any life expectancy that we had in, in that system. We had to make that investment. Even if we go to Johnson Controls, they won't make an investment in that, 'cause there's no money to make. We gotta invest in the, in the pipes and the wires, and that is, you know, eighty percent of this investment, you know? The LED lights, everyone is interested in investing in that, 'cause they can actually take, potentially use the savings and, and make, you know, a few dollars with, with the savings. So, think of the LED lights as a system, that anyone is interested in investing in that, but Jeff is correct, we can borrow cheaper than anybody else. But to replace the pipes and the wires and those things, no one is gonna invest in that, we gotta do it. And the only way to do that is to bond for it, or pay cash.
Because we own that, it's our infrastructure. But, but I wanna be really clear, 'cause we're using the word surveillance, as of right now, what we're talking about is, is a connection to water meters, and potentially being able to use the technology for meter reading.
Right, and the channels, the data channels we're buying, that we're setting up originally, in the initial phase, don't have the bandwidth to do video or anything off the start. We would have to add higher bandwidth channels, which is, which is capable, the equipment's capable of doing, but in the initial purchase, it's, it's not included.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna be clear, that's never been part of the conversation, that, that, that...
We talked about it last time.
We did, but we, same conversation was, this wouldn't, the technology wouldn't be set up specifically for any type of surveillance, but there, there may be technology in the future around water, air quality, things like that.
Well, if you think about it, we're setting up, we're really, in the process right now, setting up two networks across the city. One is the low radio network that's for small sensors, and the next is this flex net, network that's gonna cover the whole city. And in the future, we'll be able to add just about any kind of sensor, depending on what it is, to either one of those networks. And as we add those sensors, then we have to be conscious of these things, like, is a sensor a camera, is a sensor a, a motion detector to count pedestrians, is a sensor an empty parking space? And we're talking about a sensor on a food truck, so the community knows where the food, food truck is. So we have all these things going on as we move towards becoming a smart community.
Yeah.
And this just, this is like the first step of many.
Yeah, okay, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think, to Commissioner Liner's concerns, we did have a, a good conversation and asked ACLU to take a look at our policy, they helped develop it. But going forward, there're gonna be different commissioners around this table, and I do think we need to set up some opportunities for conversations around this. I think one of which could be our Public Safety Committee, which is new, it's got civilians on it, I would love to see the mayor add a position as well. And that routinely, if there's anything that is going to raise a concern like that, that, that body as well as this discuss it, and we find other ways to get information out to the public through our new news magazine and so on, because there are so many levels. There's, you know, there's meter reading, there's also being able to find a parking spot that's open, which would be wonderful. But we could also potentially, and I don't think should, sell information, so who's driving up to this store, so that, that the, the marketplace could, could then target coupons to Commissioner Liner, for example. But we, we have to be really cautious about that, and, and allow ACLU, allow others to, to weigh on it, weigh in on that. So I think it's worth setting in place some protections as we talk about that. But, to be clear again, I am concerned too about the word surveillance, but we have to also be realistic that things can be misused, so we have to put protections in place.
And, Tom, thank you for saying that, any, any, anything we do in the future would come back, and I think we've been really clear as well about the policy, and if we need to strengthen that language, we can revisit that policy, and, and we may, we may need to do that.
Is there a way to give a copy of that email to the commission? I'd like to see that.
Which email?
The policy that's...
Oh, yeah, sure.
Commissioner Allen?
So, this is a difficult, this is really difficult, because we've been intently, intensely working on the Housing Now recommendations, which led right into our budget. In the meantime, we had a failed attempt at trying to interview a, a, s, s, new city manager, we had an interview for a new city clerk, like, this, this board has been really pedal to the metal. This issue has come up several times, and to staff's credit, they provided an A3, it made good sense. My take on what I've heard is, very clearly, two separate issues, there's a major infrastructure issue that needs to be dealt with as soon as possible, and then there's this added piece, that while you're doing it, it makes sense to add this other piece, and I totally understand that. They had a piece of doing the wiring, the seven-pin connectors, all those kind of things. What I'm concerned about is perception, and, you know, sometimes we just have to not be so worried about it, but this is one case where I'm very, very worried about perception. Because already, there's not, I don't believe there's universal acceptance of this whole package as it is right now by this body, but already, this morning, in finance, we had to approve five million dollars of, to allocate some funds to, of which four million of it was stuff we had to do anyways. Some equipment we needed to buy, some meters, some other things, but then a million of it was related to this. So, Mike very clearly told us, if, if this doesn't go forward, then they can't spend the million, because it's been approved that way, so we approved that this morning. We're talking about language of issuing notice of intent, intent means we intend to do this. I'm very uncomfortable with putting a notice of intent if this body isn't resolute that this is something that right now that we ought to do. Recognizing, however, that this is something that staff is very urgently saying to us, deal with this, because we've kicked the can down the road too, too long. So, I have a question for Jeff, and then I'd actually like to make a motion. Jeff, if we were to delay this notice of intent by, say, thirty days, would that cause any major problems?
Well, it's more for Mike, because, I mean, there's significant underground work that needs, that's dangerous, there's, again, concrete poles that are falling over, so we need, we don't have money in the, in open resources to pay for any of this work, so if we delay it, that's fine, we just can't start the work thirty days in a row.
So, so...
And, again, yeah, go ahead.
And because they cut the budget back to just this ten million for this budget cycle, some of the money was partnering with Streets to do that infrastructure project, as the street was opened up, was part of it, to leverage the, the street funds to do part of the work, so. was part of it to leverage the, the street funds to do part of the work, so. And some of that works ongoing this summer, so.
So, what, what I'd like to propose is a motion to table. And I will let, I'm open to discussion in regard to that motion, whether that's at the next meeting, which isn't until July ten, where you can have a work session.
We meet next, next week.
We meet next week, right. So, I, I would like to motion to table unless, until we could have that actual work session where we could gain some sense of unanimity around this table before we issued it. Because that language of notice of intent is very important to the public, you're already doing this. And whereas I totally agree with Mike, we need to be a smart city. We need, our residents need to be very comfortable that, you know, we're not watching over them from street lamps. And once you put the infrastructure in, folks aren't going to trust that you're not going to just go up there and plug something in. I mean, just be honest with you, I mean, that's just the way it is, so.
Let me make this clear, under the current design with the current level of FlexNet, you can't go just plug a camera and it'll work.
I'm hearing that very clearly from you, but when we issue a notice of intent, that's, that's language. So, I would like to motion to table until next week, but I'm seeing our attorney raise her hand. Oh, okay, so it'd be not a motion to table, most to postpone until next week.
Okay, so motion to postpone until next week was made and support. That's the motion on the table right now, any additional conversation about that?
I know it's not debatable, so, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't know that next week is soon enough. I mean, I don't know that we can resolve all what we're discussing here today that quickly. I think Mayor, Mayor, the point that you made earlier about having a work session to kind of talk through this, we, help me to understand with the way the budget is outlined, and maybe Jeff, this is a question for you. This decision doesn't necessarily need to be made.
And I'm willing to amend my motion to table to the July ten meeting.
Okay, I'm going to let staff weigh in about timing and our interim city manager talk about when we could have the questions that have been posed by all of us answered.
Yes, so I, I agree with Commissioner Lanier that next week is, I mean, we've got first, I think our first responsibility is let's adopt the budget. And get that done. And, you know, we're now into committee the whole year today, and we still get seventeen items to do. So, so, you know, we're, and these are important items and really good discussions. So, I, I want to make sure we have the time to prepare appropriately and be able to present you with the information you've requested. So, that means, you know, July tenth is the first available date that we could do that.
Then I'll amend my motion to postpone to the July ten.
And then we'd have to find time that day in order to.
Well, I think between now and July ten, I think we need to schedule a work session.
Well, we could, we could, we could schedule a work session for July ten. And have that discussion then, or we could have a informative discussion then, or we could do it.
I, I think we, we can look at our, our schedules, but I think we should have a work session in between.
Okay, so you want to postpone the action item until July tenth and then have a work session in the middle?
That's what I'm hearing, and I think that makes most, most sense. I mean, clearly, there's an urgency. We have projects tied up with street projects, as well as clear need for infrastructure improvements. And so, I, I think we need to, that's what I'm hearing Commissioner Allen say. So, bring the item back on July tenth, and in between now and July tenth, we will have a work session and have these questions answered.
And we can still approve the budget, that is, it's, it's just a placeholder for a bond payment. If these guys decide not to do it, that's fine, it would just roll the fund balance, so.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, motion to postpone until July tenth is on the table, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to a resolution authorizing the publication, oh, I'm. Yep, I'm right. A resolution authorizing the publication of a notice of intent to issue water supply system revenue bonds. So, Ms. Jana? I'm sorry, she's got a motion and support.
Okay, this is a notice of intent to issue as much as fifty million dollars for water supply system improvements. This gives the public forty-five days to reply during what we call a referendum period, this is required by the city charter. No bonds will be issued until you approve what we call a series ordinance for the water and the sewer systems. For other bond issues, it's a bond authorizing resolution, but we won't move forward on the bonds, and we may break this into more than one piece as well.
Commissioners, any questions? Paid, paid for through the Water Department?
Correct, and we'll structure the debt to mitigate the impact on the customer communities and our own customers.
Great, thank you. All right, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks, Jana. Next is a resolution authorizing fiscal year twenty nineteen service provision fees to be effective July one, twenty eighteen. All right, moved and supported.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Keith Hybor, I'm a budget analyst in the Fiscal Services Department. This item is to request a resolution authorizing the fiscal year twenty nineteen service provision fees to be effective July one, twenty eighteen. These fees support the FY nineteen proposed budget, and attached to this resolution is the final schedule of all the FY nineteen department user fees combined onto one document. I first presented this document to you on May one, and I requested that a resolution to schedule a public hearing be set for May twenty-two to receive comment on the fees. We did have a public hearing on May twenty-two, and so now the last item of this process is just to adopt the fee schedule. Are there any questions?
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
I have a quick one. We have the ability to adjust these. I know we're doing a lot of talking with some of the housing recommendations and may have the need to make some adjustments, and there's no problem outside of the budget time to do that, right?
Yeah, we can always go back and make amendments. Great. Thanks for clarifying that.
And, and we've also eliminated some recently, so as the clerk continues to work on that, they might come back to us.
I do, I do want to reiterate some of the public comment that we heard about just having more information about the fee schedule before the public hearing. We should make a note and try to think about how to do that for next year.
We have, we have talked about that. Trying to figure out, it's massive amount of information, and we'll try to find a way to summarize it. I think the charts that make the most sense are the ones that are changing more than the rate of inflation or new fees. Probably the ones people care most about. We'll make sure that we find a way to do it better.
Yeah, and, and maybe even having it broken down by department. What I find is people are most interested in the ones that they think will directly impact them, and they don't want to have to go through the entire list. So, maybe even break it down differently into departmental budgets and have larger print and have it available electronically in a more user-friendly way where people can click down and see.
It is available electronically on the Budget Office webpage. We do mention that in the public hearing notice as well. So, there's a link to get to the Budget Office webpage and see the fee schedule electronically, and it is separated by department, too, on the schedule.
But it's, it's the schedule that we see, right? It's like the, the long line of fiscal year seventeen, proposed nineteen change. So, it's, it's not, in my opinion, you can't just go in and click through. Like, it, it really is just bringing up the paper format that we see electronically. So, I just wonder if there's a, a way that we can break it down differently electronically.
So, if it's confusing for us to understand, it's hard for the public to understand, so we'll do a better job of fixing it.
Maybe a great, a, a great opportunity to use our, our user testers to, to try out some different formats. So, anyway, I'll leave that up to you for next year. I just, I think that was really valid input from the community, and we can do better. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is a resolution to repeal section seven point two, six, two, special event license of chapter ninety-nine of Title VII entitled Transient Merchants.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, this one's going to look a little familiar, we did have it at the last meeting, but there was a typo within the item on the agenda. Chapter ninety-nine is actually entitled transient merchants, not special event permit. And we are only looking to repeal the section that deals with the special event permit, not the entire chapter.
All right, any questions, Commissioners? All right, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to a resolution authorizing a cure violence site assessment. So moved? All right, Mr. Eric Delong?
Yep, thank you. So, we've talked about a variety of interventions that could happen as part of our policing community relations work. And one is, and we'll have a further discussion about community officers as time goes on. And also, but there's been a, a community-based approach as well that has been talked about and also was presented as one of the items in the A three. When the police department presented to you at their budget review, there was consensus among the commission to bring cure violence forward to take a look at. So, responding to that, I've worked with the police chief to work with cure violence to figure out the next steps in looking at using cure violence. And the next step is to do a site assessment. And the site assessment would cost seventy-five hundred dollars and would, they would come to Grand Rapids, work with a variety of stakeholders, community stakeholders, and assess the situation and determine what, in their estimation, is the best model for this specific implementation here with us, given all we're trying to accomplish. And at the end of that, we could decide to proceed or not based on our evaluation of their recommendations. So, this would get us started, and is a first step. So, cure violence is described in, we've had a presentation here to City Commission, talked about how it works, it's a violence interruption strategy. And it, we could have the police chief talk a little bit if we wished to about that. He's done some research as well, but it's, it's been implemented in various locations around the country. There have been empirical studies done on its impact and whether it produces the result that it says it will. Those studies have shown that it does, and it seems to be, it's not the only option, but it is probably the most well-studied option and has the most empirical evidence about it and seems to be the best option for us to consider exploring at this time. So, with that, I would offer it for your consideration.
All right, questions, comments? Commissioner Kelly, did you?
Well, I'm happy to see this come forward. As you know, I went to Chicago a few years ago, and I met with the interrupters and took a tour and have studied it pretty extensively, had lots of community conversations. And this is one of the programs that I hoped that our Safe Committee would consider because we are looking for ways to stop violence and particularly gun violence. So, and, and I think as time has gone on, we're only seeing more of that. Found it interesting this weekend to see an article in the paper where the ISD is talking about, let's take a real close look at the, the opportunities that are out there to address violence and look at it as, through the lens of public health, which is, you know, I'm glad to finally see that conversation happening. When we were first meeting about this, it was gratifying to have our health partners at the table, Kent County and particularly St. Mary's, they actually sent somebody to Chicago as well. So, I just think that the time is right. I've read lots of articles, too, about even how school shootings are, there's copycatting going on, that we are social beings and that violence spreads in a, in a way that disease spreads. And it's, it's time that we come up with some new solutions, and this is one that the community has been asking for, for some time. So, I'm in support of moving forward on this.
Commissioner Lanier?
So, I have a question. When we, I know when cure violence came before the commission earlier this year, I'm not sure which month, but after that, last month, actually, Commissioner Jones was able to make it to the Safe Task Force meeting. His schedule wouldn't allow him to come any sooner, but we talked about cure violence and some other models. And his recommendation was for us to look at, I, I can't remember the other models that he had, a part of his slide deck, but there were other models that he was suggesting that we look into. So, is cure violence, is, is this assessment going to assess more than just cure violence? I'm not fully understanding what the assessment is. We, we kind of already knew what it costs for cure violence, so it really couldn't be about costs. I am excited that they are offering, at least Charlie mentioned when he was here with the presentation to the commission, that they have an à la carte kind of option now that they didn't have before. So, yeah, I'm, I'm just kind of confused about the order and what it is exactly. Are we trying to get from the assessment? And will we be looking at more than just the cure violence model as, as what was suggested from Commissioner Jones? Safe has not had an opportunity to even really talk about what was presented to it because we haven't met since that meeting to talk about, you know, whether those models were models that we wanted to look at or not. So, I'm not even sure how the committee feels about the other models. So, just kind of curious about the steps. Oh, and if I can add, too, and we also were saying that we were going to have a comprehensive discussion about all police-related items from that A three in a work session. So, I'm just trying to have a global conversation so that it's all in context.
Yeah, so I, I'll let Eric respond to that because I, I do think we need to have a larger conversation about all those items. I know several of us feel strongly about, we have this funding allocated, we need to spend it, we need to have a comprehensive approach. And I know the chief, we talked about that when he presented for the budget. And so, I just made a list that I need to schedule two work sessions and, and public safety needs to be one of those. I actually have a number of other items that I think we need to incorporate into that public safety work session that we can talk about. But I'll let Eric respond to that first, and then I'll.
I'm sure I remember all the questions, but I will. Lead me through the answers. So, what we hope to accomplish is an understanding of what cure violence would recommend would be its implementation of a model in Grand Rapids. So, they're not going to evaluate other, other, other potential models. They're going to tell us what they think the best implementation of their model would be here and what its cost would be. So, we, we do have some cost information, but I think it was speculative. And what I was hoping we would have for our discussion regarding the overall community and police relations discussion is a blend of community officers, violence interruption, other approaches. So, we end up with a, a full and complete response to this matter, not pieces of it. So, I think getting this assessment of, of what this could do, I think is really, really important. And, because that'll be, I think, a factor in how we, how we allocate resources within the dollars that we've reserved for police and community relations.
I, I think I'll have the chief come up because my memory is, and what we talked about during, during the budget was these ideas and options around a hybrid model, but also similar to what Commissioner Lanier said, what elements of cure violence do we think we really need slash à la carte? But how could that potentially be coupled with, with other efforts? Knowing that all of us around this table said we need a violence prevention program.
And if you could, Chief, as you're responding, include the ceasefire element that I know you had been studying too recently because that, too, was the combination of cure violence and ceasefire were recommendations through Safe. Not one of them or those two separate, but kind of combining them.
So, ceasefire, or, I'm sorry, cure violence actually started as ceasefire and has since morphed into using the terminology cure violence. So, the inception is more than the same. What's in front of you today for the seventy-five hundred dollars would be the first step, and I think the wording, conduct the Cure Violence one-on-one workshop with representation from key city government agencies and community organizations to familiarize those agencies and organizations with the Cure Violence health model. So, that health model is somewhat unique to Cure Violence. Addressing and identifying violence in the community from a medical perspective, utilizing community members, they term them violence interrupters, who have credibility within the community to serve in that capacity. So, having said that, the meeting that we had with Charlie Ransford was unique. They recognize that Grand Rapids is not Chicago, it's not New York, it's not Baltimore. We don't have the level of violence, nor we, nor, nor do we have the historic gang element that some of those cities have. So, very encouraging to me, and I think interim city manager Delong, was Mr. Ransford and Cure Violence's open-mindedness to come here, do the assessment, meet with key stakeholders, and see if they couldn't form just that, an à la carte response to a city of our size using that medical epidemic perspective in terms of dealing with community violence. Does that answer your question, or does it cause more questions?
I, I think that makes sense to me. Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I wasn't here for the A three, would have had an opportunity to dive deep into it and talk to some of my colleagues about it. And I, I think, for me, I'm, I'm still struggling with, we have the million dollars set aside a year, right? So, we're in our second year, we've got one point seven million dollars left. I, I still feel like we're, we're sort of nickel and diming this away. Like, I, I think we should at least take this more global perspective, and I think the city manager brought it up to say, you know, I think we should. manager brought it up to say, you know, I think we should set aside a quarter million dollars for violence interruption strategies and make a decision so that we can get, so that these guys can get to work on doing something and say, let's set aside $600,000 to hire community police officers and you get to go do that. And like, let's just make a determination about this, some of this money, not all of it. And if it doesn't all get spent, well, good on you for being a good fiscal steward of our tax dollars. But in the interim, like, let's make some decisions about, like, allocating some of these fundings to certain initiatives without a determination of exactly how they're going to get used. And at least for me, $7,500 feels like, you know, when we take bids all day long for things for RFPs, like, sometimes people do work on the front end of things in hopes of getting the work at the back end of things. Like, that's how it works in the real world. And so in some regards, this $7,500 bucks feels like, hey, we're going to pay you to tell us how to do this job, that we can do this job, that we already know we can do in some regard. So why are we wasting $7,500 bucks to figure it out? If this is the best people to do the job and we know we're going to end up going with them anyway, why are we spending $7,500 bucks for them to give me a sales pitch? Let's just spend $150,000 and pick the à la carte options we want and move on and stop talking about this and actually do the things.
Yeah, and I think, and Commissioner, you weren't here for the budget session. I think that was what was relayed to the chief, is that we've been talking about a violence prevention program for four or five years now. And we had funding allocated several years ago. We didn't move forward. It's long overdue. Every major police department or most of them who are leading this country, they have very specific violence prevention efforts. And so I think that was what was communicated when the chief presented last time is, we need to move forward. Like, we've been talking about this long enough.
Yeah, the trip to Chicago predates my arrival and I'm getting ready to start my fifth year here. So I think it's really, I agree. This, the Cure Violence model is one of the few out there that has empirical data to show results. So whether it's through John Hopkins, where it was studied in Baltimore, or John Jay in New York, the statistics are there, the study is there. And I know that's important to be able to measure the investment and the return on investment to this commission. So from what I've heard from Cure Violence, they're very open-minded in terms of really crafting a design that fits what we're looking for here.
Commissioner Park?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just encourage us to have that discussion before we approve this budget. I think that one of the best times to improve community police relationships is in the summertime, you know? That's also the time when the violence spikes. And so like, can we approve and get working on stuff now so that, and save money because that 21st century is going to take a while to be done and there ought to be some money left over for them to be able to recommend some of their recommendations. And we're going to get to hear some of those on tomorrow night. But I'd love to have this discussion before we approve the budget. Let's categorize what we want to, kind of, the lanes we want people to run in so that this summer we can already see the benefit of it.
Eric, did you?
No.
You looked like you wanted to respond to that.
I think I'll shut up.
I know, that's what I thought too.
I want to echo something that chief said. So I was very encouraged by the conversation with Mr. Ransford and I think that we will get a distinctly Grand Rapids approach here. And that's, I think, critical because we're a leader in the nation, you know, would you, I think we have an excellent chief. He's talked to other chiefs in the nation who have used Cure Violence and have, he's got really good recommendations about the program in their community and about the amount of collaboration and what it's done for them. And so I would, we're all aching to invest in community and police relationships and make a difference. And I think this is an important step in doing that to make sure we get a uniquely Grand Rapids implementation, something we'll be proud of and something that will be maybe a model in the nation of the best implementation of it. So I think it's money well invested to get started and that's why I've recommended it.
Commissioner Allen and then I'll come back to Commissioner Linier and then Commissioner Kelly.
I don't inherently have a problem with the $7,500 as long as there's a clear expectation of what we're going to get out of it. So I want to echo what I'm hearing some of my fellow commissioners say, that we know we need to invest significant amounts of money. I don't want to throw money at a problem. I want to make sure we're spending money to get results and to create a difference. So, you know, to me, as I look at the proposal before us, they're going to come and they're going to meet and there's a bullet list of all the different agencies and organizations they're going to meet with. And, you know, it includes Health Department. We know this is a public health issue. What do we need to spend to support some specific initiatives with our Health Department? Law enforcement, there's talk, it came out from community conversations about having community specialists in the evening rather, as well as the daytime to help those issues. The big ones for me are community leaders, community organizations, residents, youth, education. That's where the real money needs to be spent because that's where the solutions are. And I don't, I think it would be good to have an outside organization that has empirical data like this to come in and kind of give a framework. But the real money needs to be spent with organizations that we know that exist in the city and as well as, I want to be really clear in this, some non-traditional organizations. I go back to the SAFE pitch night, you know, we heard some pitches from some organizations that have never stepped up to help this issue, you know? So I have no problem with spending $7,500 in the broad scheme of things is not money as long as we're very clear what the outcome is. And the outcome is, this is how we can best spend some of this 1.7 million dollars in these areas with these local organizations. I don't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars to some outside organization to come in and tell us what to do. So, you know, so if they're going to tell us, this is how we fit and this is where, I mean, we certainly, they're experts, they've got empirical data, it costs money to bring them to town. I have zero problem with that. But I want to be really clear what our expeditions are coming out of this.
To your point, Commissioner, the conversation that interim city manager and I had with Mr. Ransford touched on just that. We discussed existing SAFE task force, CLEAR for our recidivist program and how we could use those relationships and what we've already built to further the Cure Violence model.
Yeah, and that's fundamental to the model, is the relationships and having people who have those connections and relationships in the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Commissioner?
So I'm curious then, Eric, why didn't you just bring, if you had the conversation and they presented a proposal, why were they directed then to come back with this assessment? See, this is when the bait and switch thing doesn't feel so good because we're saying, let us go through this, understand what it is so we can make the selection about the elements that we think we need. And then we get something that to me feels like, okay, we know we can slide through $7,500 without doing an RFP. Perhaps maybe the à la carte proposal that came before you all was at the threshold where the RFP needed to be done. I don't know, but I think the absence of information allows minds to wander and then people come up with what they can assume may have taken place because if we want, if we, like Commissioner O'Connor said, if this is who we're going to go with, let's just do it. But let's do it right. Let's have the conversation where we can fully see what it is that we want from them, make those decisions and move forward. But to have an assessment happening, $7,500, and it's odd that the organization who's assessing is the organization who has the solutions. So they're going to suggest themselves as the organization to solve the problem.
I have every expectation that they will suggest models that they implement.
Right.
So, and that's what I have said and that's what I believe. So this is their process. So if we want to invest, this isn't a process that I made up. This is a process that they suggested and they, this is how they work. They come in, they do an assessment in a community before they recommend an implementation because they don't do, they don't want to, he doesn't want to do a cookie cutter thing where, oh, this worked in Chicago, let's do that. Or this worked in New York, let's do that. They want to seriously do something that is fit for us. That, and in order to design that, they need to know us better and that's what they're coming in to do.
So how much was the proposal?
I don't have a proposal from them.
So I thought I heard that they came in with something and then during this conversation, I thought I heard that.
No, they, I think that they cost.
I think your words were, yeah, we do have numbers.
Well, these numbers are anecdotal numbers that were in PowerPoint or came out of someplace. I don't know. They didn't, I don't have in my possession or have ever read a proposal to us. So maybe somebody has, but I don't have one. So.
Well, I was getting it from your comment when you said we have numbers.
Well, I'm going to look to the chief.
Yeah.
I do have an assessment visit proposal with that cost in there and I can share that and I apologize if I didn't share prior. But to read from the highlights of it, the $7,500 covers preparing and submitting a detailed written report to the city, including the following elements, an analysis of the violent crime data provided by the city, an identification of the geographic areas requiring particular focus and attention, a description of how implementation of the Cure Violence health model would address violence in the identified areas, and the identification of government and existing community agencies, organizations, leaders and members whose participation will be necessary for implementation of the health model. So this came as an email attachment and I'm sorry that it appears to not have been forwarded.
So the rest of my comment then will be is, Commissioner Repard, within the existing budget, we already have the funds allocated. So having this discussion and when it's, when we're ready to spend the funds, going back to your point, they're already there and available. But I do think this is premature voting on this assessment. I'd like to this, for this to be a part of the conversation we've already talked about that was a part of the A three that the chief presented because it was a part of the A three that the chief presented and we didn't want to do, if we didn't want to do the element regarding the officers from that A three because we wanted to have a global conversation, I think this is the equivalent of that. It should be all part of one conversation because if we enter into an agreement today and then within the 30 days that we may have this work session, decide, okay, this is how we're going to allocate funding, we're locked into something before we've had the discussion I think is necessary. So I would, you know, recommend that we do something similar to what we just did, which is kind of postpone the discussion until we have that work session that we talked about earlier this week.
Commissioner and then Commissioner Park?
Yeah, I would like to move forward with this. For one thing, to Commissioner Repard's point, summer is approaching and I'd like to get started. And I, my sense is, you know, we had a presentation that Commissioner Jones went to SAFE and he also presented here and invited the folks from Cure Violence, that this is an effort to develop that hybrid for us and give us that information by reaching out to these groups. We've been talking about this for five years. I think we've got a sense around the table that we want to do this, that we want to do something evidence-based and we're fortunate to have in Grand Rapids, an expert in this area as well and a lot of folks who've come to us interested in having this happen. So I'd like to get started on it and I agree that we need to have that larger conversation. Tomorrow night we'll have some insight and input from 21st Century Policing. This is going to be, it's a complex problem. We're going to be working on this for years. We certainly can't lay everything at the feet of the police department anymore than I ever felt we could at the feet of teachers, for example. But we know that violence, that this is an empirically approached program, that it has worked, that we can tailor make it to Grand Rapids and I would like to just get going on it. Stop talking and start acting.
Commissioner, can I ask the chief a question? So chief, you had a conversation, you've taken a look at this. I know that you've spent a lot of time looking at violence prevention programs. Are you supportive of at least having this assessment so that we know which direction we want to go?
I am. And to Commissioner Linier's point and Commissioner O'Connor's point, I too am sensitive that the money set aside for improving police and community relations is going to quickly dissipate. That being said, I think in this instance, the number is small enough, $7,500, and the upside of a known commodity like Cure Violence is big enough for us to take this next step. The empirical data that I've reviewed from both Baltimore and New York is impressive. And in terms of criminal justice and police programs, it's hard to find programs that really can show the results of their initiatives. This is one of those. So I'm excited about the discussion that we've had with Mr. Ransford so far. To Commissioner Kelly's point, the fact that he's local and has a real vested interest in improving Grand Rapids, I think creates a unique opportunity for us.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go to Commissioner Park and then I'm going to make a recommendation.
Sure. And I just really wanted to follow up on a comment that you made the last time we talked, chief, which was, you wanted to make sure to be able to ask questions of how this is going to interface with the police department? And I just wanted to hear, you know, was that conversation satisfactory to you?
It was. That was the first question I posed to Mr. Ransford. So in some places where historically the trust has really been nonexistent between police and community members, the violence interruptors that have been used to mediate violence outbursts within the community have kept their distance and autonomy from the police department. Here, Mr. Ransford and I discussed our CLEAR program, which already has built relationships and bridges with members in the community who have credibility and who have done time in prison and who are now working collaboratively with the police department to ensure that they don't reoffend. And the nexus between them not reoffending and then using them as models in the larger community to prevent initial offenses seemed to be a very, a very great, a very good starting point.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
So commissioners, I do want to follow up and I'll work with interim city manager Eric Delong today on getting a couple work sessions on our schedule in the next 30 days. I'd like public safety to be one of them. And I'll just put this out there, chief, so that you know my hopes and I'll get additional feedback from the commission. I think we need to take a deeper dive into the A three. I know we've all had a chance now to take a look at that and I know that there's questions about that. So I would like to take a deep dive into that, into the recommendation about community police officers and deployment. I know that there have been a number of questions about that. I'd also like to talk more and get an update on the policing at the speed of trust. And then the recommendations and the feedback that we get out of the community forum tomorrow night with 21st Century, we're going into our, what, eighth month with them? Seventh month? Anyway, we're over halfway through. My hope is that we actually have some concrete recommendations that we as a body can hear but also integrate. And then we can make some decisions and let you start the implementation of that. So I would like to, I would like to recommend that. So again, I know our schedules are a little tricky over the next few weeks with summer coming, but we'll make sure that we get those two work sessions, one on the LED lights and then one on public safety, really specific to a number of items that have been worked on so that we can make some decisions.
Thank you.
So commissioners, I'm going to call the question then on this item, a resolution authorizing a Cure Violence site assessment. Can all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. All right, next is a recommendation. This is recommendation number 11 of the Housing Advisory Committee. This is a resolution introducing a residential rental application ordinance and setting a public hearing for that. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, I would say somewhat. Thank you. All right, Eric, you want to talk about this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So we've been working with the community, well, with the Housing Advisory Committee, made a recommendation that we do something regarding rental, rental application regulation. And so prior to Greg's leaving, Greg was working with Jessica Wood, who, former city attorney, assistant city attorney, and has, and crafted the ordinance that was in the package. And you've seen that, had that since the recommendations were presented. Since that time, we have refined the ordinance and the refined ordinance is now presented to you for your review. So we believe this ordinance is a step forward, a good step forward, because we would be one of the few cities in the state that are, that actually have this type of regulatory ordinance in place. One of the things that we've been able to accomplish is to work with the RPOA to also have them accept this. One of the components as well is that we're working with the Housing Commission to actually get to the root of the problem in terms of why people may not be able to find housing, which is to help people get their credit repaired, to help people figure out other elements of rental housing applications. And we're working with Carlos Sanchez at the Housing Commission to help put together a framework of that. That might require an investment and we might find some partners to do that. But the idea of that program would be to have persons who may have been rejected to get in a position where they will in the future not be rejected. And really, that's what we want, our people in housing. So this is here for your consideration and we will also set a public hearing coming up on June 12th.
All right, Carlos, thank you for joining us again. We are really strengthening our relationship with the Housing Commission. I think I've seen you more this past six months than I have in three years. So do you want to come up and talk about this? We really appreciate you being a partner with us in this work because I know you know how how critical this is.
Eric and I have met a couple of times to talk about what we want to do is call it a rent readiness program. And what we would like to do is, and well, I got a proposal that I'm going to submit to to Eric later, but looking at what are some of the impediments? He mentioned credit counseling and those kind of things. We have a resident service program, so issues might be employment, might be income, might be all kinds of things. So we would like to see those that are getting turned down, how do we get them to be rent-ready? If they have a poor credit history or need their credit repaired, any of those kind of things, we'll be able to refer them to agencies that do provide some of that thing, sit down with the family and say, okay, here are your issues, here's what you can do to improve that. Because we know that with the affordable housing and the fact that a lot of folks can't find things, that's one of the impediments. So it might be an income issue, it might be other issues as well. So we'll be able to do kind of an analysis of each each of the families that are getting denied and let them know why they're getting denied.
Great. Commissioners, questions?
So I'm not sure where this has been, this topic has been discussed, but the last I knew was something we were considering. I didn't even realize we had made a decision on who was going to house the, you know, rental application process. So somehow, some way, I think in our in how we're communicating, we're missing something. And I'm not opposed to that, it's just it before this item came before the commission, I wasn't aware that we had made a decision about that. And I think it's a good thing that it is the Housing Commission. I think especially in light of the fund going to the Housing Commission, it just kind of fits with them being kind of this central neutral hub. But I'm now I'm wondering, what else am I missing? Because we haven't had a discussion about this particular item until now. I think, you know, what's in here is a really good start in order to present to the community for them to weigh in. But I think, you know, without, I think it was dollar amounts, I was thinking that we'd see more about the cost of that because that had been a concern brought up on multiple occasions. So yeah, there's just a few things.
So what the memo tells you are a couple of things. One, that this is the rental application ordinance and with the provisions that you see before you. Secondly, it says the the effort that Carlos would do is not the taking of applications. So or the creating of a application market or the central market that we've talked about. What Carlos would do, the Housing Commission would do, would be to work with individuals to help them be ready, rental ready. So they would have no blemishes on their background, their career, so they there would be less likelihood of them being rejected when they appoint, when they applied for rental housing. So it's an individual one-on-one service with residents, but the Housing Commission would not be making applications for them or or being a central registry.
So this isn't addressing the concerns that came before us at all?
No, it is.
So no, it isn't. The concerns that people, the concerns that people brought forth were the number of fees that they're paying every time they're seeking housing. They brought forth that 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 they are being, background checks are cost the amount of what those fees are, how many fees are being requested based on the number of adults in the household or people over 18. There are a number of things that, and and I think this is a good component, so now it makes even more sense of why it was so empty. I was like, where are the numbers about what how how much it's going to cost? And maybe it's speaking to just how out of the loop I am. Because as I was reading this, I was thinking, okay, this isn't going far enough, and now you're telling me it isn't intended to do that. So where are we with those discussions? Because I thought those were the discussions that Greg was having with RPOA was tied to the concerns that citizens came to the commission with for over a year.
Yeah, he had he had the discussion with the RPOA to do the pre-application and kind of centralize. And then they wanted to, what's the next step? Why don't you tell somebody that they're not rent, you know, they can't, that their credit's bad and everything? What else are we going to do with that? So Greg had talked to me about what are some of the things we can do to assist some of those families that are, one, being charged several times for a pre-application, and second, what happens when they get the bad news? So I'm putting a proposal that will try to address both of those issues, and then we can go from there for the discussion. So I I'm gonna present it to my board as well, see what they think about it. But at this point, we're just in preliminary discussions about how do we address that concern? So the one thing is if we have a pre-application centralized, will landlords accept our certification that the person is in good standing and not charge them for another fee? Was one of the goals that we were trying to accomplish. We got some of our major landlords that currently do Section 8, they're in our portal. Some of them have kind of told me that they would accept it, so they wouldn't have to charge folks as well. So it could help a lot of lower, and we're going to target lower-income families, people making 80% and lower.
So this is a component with the residential rental application ordinance, and this is to set a public hearing on that.
Yes.
And I think, Commissioner, I I hear what you're saying. I I feel like with the transition with Greg retiring, he had these conversations with us months ago before he left, and then some work has been happening with Eric and Carlos and Clay. And so that's that's probably why, just timing-wise, we just haven't heard about it in a while. I'm gonna let Eric respond, and then Commissioner Part and Commissioner Allen have a question.
I think the ordinance speaks for itself. It provides a framework for how how rental applications will occur. It talks about reasonable charges. There's an appeal process to to me or to the manager, whoever the manager may designate. It also provides for repayment of the of the of the rental application fee if someone is rejected, which now is not required. So these are, I think, big steps forward. There are still some concerns. Homes for All has contacted me. I'll be meeting with them later this week to see what their concerns are. But I think we're, this is if we move forward with this ordinance and if we continue the work that we're doing with Carlos and RPOA, we'll be in a much better place than we are currently, and we'll have made significant progress.
Commissioner Part and then Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I think this is a good start to a framework, and just I would really want to encourage us to keep moving forward on this clearinghouse idea because I feel like with the technology we have available to us today, we've got to be able to solve that, and that would save everybody money, the landlords and the people applying. So I do have two things that I would want to note is, you know, I'm a I'm a proponent of having some level of a cap on what people can charge, and we can determine that, and that can be reasonable, but let's let's determine a cap. And then these fees are just, these fees for offending, to me, aren't strong enough. If somebody's gonna take advantage of a vulnerable person, a $50 fee just isn't enough. So I I feel like the fee structure, like, we're trying to get at the bat the really bad actors who are taking advantage of low-income people. I'm okay with having a pretty hefty fine for that person if someone, this is, this is, this is all common sense stuff, that if they if they violate this, that seems like it should be a more significant fee than a $50 fee.
Yeah, and that that, and I am sure we're going to hear some of that feedback during the public hearing process. Let's go to Commissioner Allen and then Commissioner Kelly.
I'll be brief in the interest of time, which is quickly running out. This is just to set the public hearing, so I'm glad to see that. I echo Commissioner Repard's concerns. Actually, I was going to say some of the same things, but I just, I think that this ordinance, the way it's written, doesn't go far enough, and I think there's some things we could do to beef it up, certainly not to exceed amount. There's some industry standards out there that make perfect sense. Let's let's set some reasonable, let's set some reasonable amounts on there, and the fee is ridiculous. And then the last piece, and I'll wait, I'll wait until we hear the public comment. This gets to some more to more fruition, but I I'm not sure how enforceable this is, so, or who enforces it. It's now kind of self-reporting, so you have a low-income person who feels like they were taken advantage of by a rental property owner, they got to go, like, who do they go, like, there there needs to be some process in place. So a little little bit concerned that the RPOA was involved in this from the beginning. I'm not trying to be disparaging, but it kind of feels like the fox watching the hen house a little bit there, so, but I'll probably come and make public comment when I'm not a city commissioner on this.
We will, we will be happy to see you. So I think those are all really good points, and so I'm going to ask our city attorney to provide us with some additional information, including accountability and enforcement and reporting and and what that would look like. I think those are really good points. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I too have the concerns about perhaps a cap would then contain the the cost then for our renters, and we need to have a fine that is a disincentive so that that there isn't still a profit motive here. And then the other thing I was wondering is if in terms of enforceability, just wondering if this would be another tool for fair housing to use, if we could check in with that. But I'm looking forward to hearing more comment. Already starting to hear some from the public.
Okay. All right, so so with that, again, this is to set the public hearing, and then the next item is is also related to the ordinance. I'm gonna call the question and try to get us moving a little bit quicker. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is a resolution introducing municipal civil infraction ordinance amendment in conjunction with the residential rental application ordinance. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, any additional questions or thoughts on this?
So mayor, this ordered.
It's a.
It's introduction, so.
It's the introduction.
We won't adapt it until we adapt an ordinance.
Right. And and it can be amended.
Well, it's set up as a municipal civil infraction right now, so if we, I'll talk to the city attorney to see if there, what way we have within the civil infraction ordinance. So it's not a criminal penalty, it's a civil infraction penalty.
But again, Eric, I have no problem with it being a municipal civil infraction. The concern is that I brought before is that I don't think the fine is enough. So if we if we pass this now, is this set in stone, or can the amount be changed?
You're not passing it now, you're introducing it.
You're introducing it.
So and I have, you know, this was recommended by the city attorney's.
Sure, I understand. This is the process we have to go through.
Yes, and we will find out if we can actually charge more.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Grand Rapids Uptown Business Improvement District Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Chama's gonna come up, and I think you're gonna be up here for a little while.
Yeah, we have a series.
So get comfortable.
Yeah, so I guess we'll begin with Uptown Business Improvement District. What you have before you is a resolution approving their fiscal year 2019 budget request. This was approved recommendation on their at their May 2 meeting this past month. The Uptown bid expects to bill property owners about $101,418. And about of that, seventeen and $17,614 will be voluntary payments from nonprofit and government property owners. So the total request in expenditures is about $110,000. This is the sixth year for the bid, for the Uptown bid special assessment. And at the end of that, at the attached, you'll see the single column budget, proposed budget for FY19, as well as the appropriations for the coming year. And June, at the July, I mean, sorry, at the May 1 board meeting, EDPT meeting, each one of the boards came and presented on some of their projects for the past year. There was a press release that was given out that can kind of outline some of the things that they kind of were working on this past fiscal year as well as this upcoming year, but I've also included that inside the memo as well, so.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next up will take us to a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Grand Rapids Uptown Corridor Improvement District Authority.
So at the same meeting. Oh, sorry.
So moved.
And so, thank you, thank you, all right.
All right. At the same May 2 meeting, the Uptown Corridor Improvement District recommended for approval, recommended to the city commission their fiscal FY19 budget. This year, they're projected to collect about $126,000, they're projected to collect $126,887 in tax increment revenue. And so this coming year, they're projecting to spend about $124,350,000 in expenditures for the upcoming year and continue the projects they have.
All right, commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Grand Rapids for the Michigan Street Corridor Improvement District.
So moved.
Support. All right.
All right, at the May 9 meeting of the Michigan Street Corridor Improvement District, they approved, they recommended for approval their FY19 budget, which is looking to have collect about $16,996 in tax current revenue. Of that, they're projecting to spend about, well, so of the, for the next fiscal year, they're going to be spending about $32,000, primarily to continue some of the projects that they've been having this year, primarily their ongoing annual block party and concert, as well as additional business mixers. They're also in the process of putting up some street banners or at least street signage that promotes and markets the district or markets the corridor.
All right, commissioners, any questions?
Just a question for you, Chama. I did hear from Max Benedict some questions about the the parking situation and the traffic situation. If you could follow up and let me know where the what the status is, or let him know what the status is of that, too. There were a couple of accidents recently, so.
Sure.
And it's in that, you know, they're make, they're doing a study, the city is, about parking on one side to alleviate some of the traffic concerns.
Most definitely. We've been actually, they've been actually having a police officer attend regularly, and that's oftentimes been been talked about, the traffic, traffic safety. I think they're also in conversation with MoGGR about some potential strategies for themselves.
Great, appreciate that. I know Commissioner Jones is the one that's serving, and he's gone today, but I'm sure he'll be happy to get some, an update.
Sure.
Great. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next is a resolution approving the fiscal year 20, I'm assuming that's 2019, budget of the City of Grand Rapids West Side Corridor Improvement District Authority.
So moved. Support.
All right.
Okay, yeah. So at the May 4 meeting of the West Side Corridor Improvement District, they approved, they recommended for approval their FY19 budget, where they're projected to collect about $110,000, $110,469 in tax current revenue. They still have a bit of a of a holdover from the previous year, but they're budgeting for this coming year to spend about $120,000 in expenditures, primarily this past year, they, well, this, the last board meeting that they just had on last week, Friday, where they kind of talked about specific projects that they're going to be doing, looking at to kind of promote the the district, primarily, they're going to be sponsoring a number of, a lot more events in the in the corridor, as well as kind of developing a marketing program and a business directory for each of the specific business districts.
Questions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, now's a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Grand Rapids for the North Corridor Corridor Improvement District.
So moved.
All right.
So at the May 17 meeting of the North Corridor Corridor Improvement District, they recommended their fiscal, the FY19 budget for the city commission to approve. Like, similar to last year, they are not capturing it, there's no tax increment capture this year. Primarily, their main event that they have going on is the the Tour de Corridor, which is mainly financed and sponsored through through sponsorships and just kind of support from the local business community in the area. But they are kind of working on doing some long-term planning in the area in conjunction with the with the Business Association as well as the Neighborhood Association. So they're kind of working their way through on what that would exactly look like. Were there specific questions about that?
No, just a comment that the North Corridor is looking for more residents to live there, and we are disappointed that a couple of projects didn't happen. But I just met yesterday with some of the long-term business owners, and they met some of the brand new, so that at least we could download some history and develop some of those relationships and make them closer.
Hopefully, those sites will be redeveloped soon.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Grand Rapids for South Town Corridor Improvement District, which has a lot of money.
The most money.
When I was reading through the budget, I was really quite impressed. Nice job, Commissioner. So I have a motion, do I have a support?
Yes.
Okay, so our two-thirds, all commissioners happily moved that. Anything to add?
Well, yeah, no, so at the the their May 16 meeting, the South Town Corridor Improvement District is recommending for the fiscal year 2019, this budget, where they're projected to collect about $149,639 in tax current revenue. to collect about $149,639 in tax increment revenue. As you all probably know, they're going through the corridor, their area-specific plan where a lot of the focus is right now, but there is a plan, strategic planning session for the 20th of this month to kinda sit down in much more concrete terms, talk about some of their budget priorities and the overall vision for the, for the board. So hopefully from that meeting, we'll come out with some, a lot more specific projects that will be, specific projects and specific allocations. But in all, in all the, I think even with all the different boards, the main goal is just kinda how using their funds on, trying to figure out how to use their funds to activate their, the individual business districts and then just kinda just create some activity and excitement in the area.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I'll just make one, a couple comments. Thank you so much, Chama, for your patience. It's a virtue and you've demonstrated that well with South Town because we have so much going on with ASP and really have been neglecting the board and the responsibilities of the board because we've been so focused on this ASP process and probably the last few months is when we started kinda refocusing the energy on the, on the work of the Cid and we're happy that we've captured this amount because it will help us after we receive the ASP to start making impact in those various business districts, so. Excited. And, and actually, I'd like to have some conversations then about North Corridor and, and, and get an understanding of how do you end up in a position where you're not capturing after having captured and, you know, so we can kinda pace out some of what we're doing so that we'll be prepared. I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but if you have any suggestions, I'd like to hear that before our strategic planning session.
I'll let you and Commissioner Kelly talk about that. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget for the City of Grand Rapids Economic Development Corporation.
Moved.
Support.
All right, Ms. Kierwood, you wanna tell us about this?
Good morning. This budget includes support and so revenues and expenditures associated with business development programs, multicultural innovation and entrepreneurship support, as well as support for our neighborhood business districts. The department is requesting continuation of the general fund transfers to support the activities in 19, so specifically the budget includes transfers of $335,000 to support those activities. Total revenues are budgeted to be $385,000 for FY19 and expenditures of $673,000. What this means is a deficit of over $288,000 and the need to draw on our fund balance. This has happened over the past few years, but certainly, you know, something that we need to be very mindful of going forward. The, and hopefully we'll be able to address during the strategic planning process undertaken throughout the next fiscal year. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
You know, I, I don't have a question, I'm just gonna make a comment. I don't know if it was a year ago, maybe a year ago, a little over a year ago, we made the decision to allocate funds...
A year ago, yep.
To support staff to support the corridor and business improvement districts, obviously. Chama is, is that support. And I just wanted to say that I think that was a really good decision and I think we are seeing the fruits of that. Just providing additional support in our economic development department to support those corridor improvement districts has been, I think, really instrumental, so thank you. I'm, I serve on the EDC and we talked at length about this budget proposal and I'm supportive and it was unanimously supported at the EDC meeting. Commissioner?
And then on a, on a larger note, if you look at the great graphics that the Economic Development Department puts out on the, if you look at a cost benefit analysis about what the city gets for spending those extra dollars, it's probably one of the best monies we spend in the city really as far as the revenues they generate. So I think there's a direct correlation between our investment in that department and what we get back.
Yeah, I agree and it's helping us meet the state requirements around reporting, which again, there's been some additional legislation really pushing tax increment districts to be really transparent and provide information and we're able to do that because we have the support internally, so.
Yeah, I'd also like to say how much I appreciate, I, I attended the, the neighborhood business group the other couple of weeks ago and the fact that we are now redevelopment ready can have an impact for our Cids too, not only potential grants for facade improvements, but attending Main Street conferences so that our Cid members can learn what it takes to create a neighborhood business corridor that's successful. So thank you for that.
Well said. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next up will take us to our resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget for the City of Grand Rapids Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Carrie, you wanna, oh, Jono?
Hi.
You switched before I looked up.
Switched faces, yes. Good morning. Before you, you have the proposed or recommended fiscal year 2019 budget for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, which was recommended by the authority on May 16. This program continues to grow. Over the last couple of years, we see 20 to 30% increases in the revenues and expenditures for this program, so currently we administer 70 agreements. That's both Brownfield Redevelopment agreements as well as the DDA agreements that we administer on their behalf. Something to note, in fiscal year 17, we began collecting revenues for the local site remediation revolving fund. This is a grant and loan fund that's capitalized now with over a million dollars and we are evaluating projects under the policies that have been approved by the authority at this point. We're excited that it's gonna allow us to invest in projects that generally don't fit nicely into the Brownfield redevelopment tax increment financing program. So we are excited about that, to bring projects to you. I think it's also important to note that of this approximately seven and a half million dollar budget, that about 95% of the revenues go directly back into urban redevelopment. So we administer this program with very, very efficiently with the staff that's available. Currently, that is sustainable into the, into fiscal year 2019. We will bump up against the legislative limit of a half a million dollars that we can retain of tax increment revenues for the purpose of administration. Right now, that seems to be okay, but we may need to evaluate that going into the future. What, what that does mean is that we'll be adding to the developer reimbursements and getting, getting those projects paid off more quickly. So for the foreseeable future, that's positive. I don't know that I have much to add beyond that. I'd be happy to answer any questions and also just recognize the various departments that, that spend a lot of time and effort administering this increasingly complicated program, so assessors, treasurers and fiscal services staff do a lot of work on this.
Yeah, thank you, Jono. Questions, comments?
I'm just impressed with your administrative costs. It's amazing.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next up takes us to a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019 budget of the City of Grand Rapids Smart Zone Local Development Finance Authority.
So moved.
Support.
All right, Kierwood, you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, so this is the Smart Zone Local Development Finance Authority budget that's been recommended to you for FY19. This includes tax increment revenue from the district and includes expenses related to their TIF and development plan specifically. There was a decrease in FY19 tax increment revenue and we expect that expenditures in their strategic priority initiatives will be increased as a result of an RFP process that led them to contracts with service providers for various aspects of their work. In addition, there is a remainder amount reserved for future strategic priority initiatives which they continue to work toward. The areas of investment include infrastructure and physical resources, connection and awareness, talent, and as I mentioned, there is a contingent remaining balance for strategic priority initiatives.
Kara, can you add one, one, can you, can you speak to one other item, or one other issue with Smart Zone? And this has come up during our Smart Zone meetings. Can you, can you clarify how the funds in Smart Zone can be, can be allocated and used? I know during the Smart Zone meeting, we had a lot of conversation about the difference between infrastructure versus programming and similar to other TIFs, infrastructure has to be used within the district versus some of the funds that can be used to support education and training outside the district. And I know MEDC has been actively engaged in explaining to us what's eligible, what's not, where it can be used and where it's not, but can you just, can you just provide a little bit of clarity around that?
I'll give a high level, level overview because this is a very difficult portion of the act that's hard for folks to understand. The eligible activities really include things that are leading toward the commercialization of high-tech companies and so it's a very narrow area of eligible activities. And they include infrastructure and services and the infrastructure specifically has to be in the certified technology park, which is what we consider to be a subset of our district. We, last year during, or two years ago during the TIF and development plan amendment, we expanded the district to be the entire city so that we can invest in the city, but then specifically, infrastructure has to be in the certified technology park, which is a subset of that. And we also expanded the boundaries of that certified technology park because we've learned over the past 10 years that innovation and entrepreneurship knows no boundaries. So in order to adequately address the needs of our ecosystem, expanding that was a need. So in terms of services though, services can be administered throughout the district but certainly have to benefit the certified technology park in a way that, again, is leading toward the commercialization of technology businesses and certainly has to be related to a high-tech industry that the legislation spells out. So it's very complex, but infrastructure in the certified technology park, but then services to benefit the certified technology park within the city.
Great, thank you. I know we've, we've had this conversation and unfortunately, my colleagues haven't been a part of those around the Smart Zone table, so, so thank you for explaining that. All right, any other questions or comments?
Thanks so much, Mayor, for asking that question because I do, I do remember last year when we expanded and then when I was looking at this, I did have a question about, okay, so what about some of those other areas that we were trying to get into? And, you know, so thank you for helping me to understand why we couldn't. I am curious to know if, if there's room in other ways to expand that we may not have tapped into just yet? You know, are there industries that we should make aware of this so that they can come after us because we may not know that they exist? And I don't know what's the best way to do that.
So are you thinking expansion of the definition of high-tech industry? Because that is a state legislated definition.
No, I mean the organizations who would qualify as high-tech. You know, I don't know that they would know that they're considered high-tech and would qualify to be a part of this. They may, I don't know.
So certainly, I think if we were to do another RFP process, I think we would do the education differently. We did hold three educational workshops in the last go-around and we did address the issue of eligible activities, eligible companies, eligible technologies, but certainly I think we could do a better job of marketing it to ensure that people are presented with a better understanding of what those, those companies would be.
And is there a way to inventory to see, you know, kind of on our own, so the next time we're going through the RFP process, we can target differently?
We could. Yeah, I think we could do that.
I think one, that's a, that's a, I would, from my perspective, serving on that body, that is something that we learned from this last process. I think many of us were disappointed that we had proposals that weren't eligible and we felt bad for the people who put time and energy into writing a proposal and then finding out that they were ineligible. So we, we, if we do that process again, we will do it differently based on what we learned. I think one exciting thing that has come out of all of this though is the partnership with WIMCAT around a cybersecurity hub and that is potentially a, we know it's a growing market and that there's incredible opportunity there and that could really, in my opinion, be a catalyst for startups and entrepreneurs in that space. And so that's been an exciting thing that's come out of that and that's been in partnership with MEDC.
Yes, and I would also add that there were proposals that we weren't able to consider in this round that we would assist in reworking to see if it, if it would qualify in the future.
Oh, good.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, commissioners, I, I am going to call for a little bit of a break because, because I need one. And then how about we just take a five-minute break?
Sounds good.
And then come back here and we'll have the budget review discussion and update based on the information that was provided to us.
We have closed session and Economic Development Project Team at 12:30.
We do have, we do have closed session that we have to go into.
The project team at 12:30.
Can we do the budget update tonight?
Can we, can we move that back? Let's see what our schedule is this afternoon.
Eric's looking like, really?
Cause you're at 11 o'clock tonight, so.
Commissioners, could we, could we do, could we do the budget update after Economic Development Project Team at 1:30? Can we go into executive session now and then take an hour break for lunch and then right after, Economic Development Project Team come back in here for budget at 1:30? Does that work?
I think we have to not adjourn committee at all.
We'll keep it, we'll keep it open?
Yeah.
Okay.
So do, how long do we think we'll, we'll be in session? I have that Ottawa Hills Park groundbreaking, well, you probably do too, Mayor.
Oh, do I?
But it's at 3, so you think 1:30, they didn't give us time to get over there?
I think so.
I, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause maybe Economic Development Project Team will be done sooner.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion to go into executive session for pending litigation?
So moved.
All right, Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?